I'd like to call the October 20th, 2022 School Board Meeting of the Franklin City Schools to Order. Welcome all of you for coming. Thank you for coming. Do we have any motions from closed session?
Yes, I'd like to move to table item number six from the personnel agenda.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed no. Motion carries.
I move to accept the personnel. Oh, I'll, I'll, thank you.
We have a motion to come out of closed session.
I move that the school board having been closed session pursuant to a proper motion come out of closed session.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed no. Motion carries. Do we have certification by the school board?
Where is the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Brittany. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion for certification signify by saying aye. Aye opposed no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we've already approved one motion from closed session. Do we have another?
Okay, I'd like, I make a motion to accept the personnel agenda with the accept, as presented with the exception of item number six in the addendum.
All right, we'll do that again. Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed no. Any abstentions? That motion carries. Do we have another?
I make a motion to approve the separation agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed no. Any abstentions? That motion carries. Do we have another?
I make a motion to name Dr. Carlton Carter as interim superintendent.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
That motion carries. Dr. Carter is with us. Dr. Carter, would you stand please? Thank you. He's our interim superintendent. Any further agenda items for personnel? Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve our agenda signify by saying aye. Aye opposed no. Any abstentions? That motion carries. Would someone please read our mission?
The mission of FCPS is to work in partnership with students, families, and the community to provide enrichment opportunities to empower individual learners to maximize their potential in becoming critical thinkers, productive citizens, and lifelong learners.
Thank you. Would someone read the vision, please?
The vision for the Franklin City Public Schools is to exemplify an unwavering commitment to high academic achievement standards and excellence in achievement, leadership, and innovation. Our vision will personify professionalism, teamwork, and transparent communication to support the growth of our students and surrounding community.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, would you call the roll, please?
Robert Hope.
Present.
Armed Counsel.
Present.
Tom Smith.
Present.
Brittany Powell.
Present.
Jeremy Crew.
Present.
Jeremy Brown.
Present.
Thank you. We definitely have a quorum. We have five people that have asked to speak at citizens' time. I will call them in order. Ms. Brenda Peterson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Peterson and I live in Ward Two. And I'm hoping all of you guys got an opportunity to read the article in the Tidewater News about last meeting. If you haven't, I'll be happy to donate my copy to you to where you can have a chance to recap what happened after you left. Um, I'd like to focus on a couple of things real quick. First of all, our actions and consequences. If we have students in our classrooms and they aren't in attendance, that gets marked. Eventually, it gets put up to a truancy officer. Truancy officer does everything within their power. Text, Skype, calling parents, knocking on doors, emailing, trying to get this child to be a drop-in versus a drop-out. If that is unsuccessful, then it becomes a problem for the courts. That's a problem. If we have a student that walks out of a classroom, that becomes a disciplinary problem. That's when the dean or the principal gets involved and they have a conversation with the student, with the parent, saying, okay, what's going on? This is not acceptable behavior. If you have a student that stands in a classroom or sits in a classroom screaming at the teacher repeatedly, that's unacceptable behavior as well. And one of two things happen. That student either removes themselves, which becomes a totally different disciplinary issue, or the teacher has to call for help and have that student removed. That requires the dean or the principal to become involved. Phone calls, parents coming to school, conversations, suspension more than likely out of school. This is not acceptable behavior in our schools, and we can all agree on that. However, in the real world where you have a job, walking off a shift is not acceptable. You get fired. Not showing up for a shift that you know that the shift is, that's kind of considered you get fired. And if you go into a job and you're screaming and yelling at your boss, you get fired. You don't get paid to continue to stay there, to continue to get benefits, to continue on just as if it was just a normal day the next day. That's unacceptable behavior. And we can all agree that the school board, you guys are seen as leaders in our community. Your job is to be out here celebrating and promoting and making our schools the best they can absolutely possibly be on all levels, whether it's on your level together as a group, with administration, your teachers, your parents, your children, and the community involved as well. Making all of us work together is how this is going to work as a successful organization. You can't do it alone and we can't do it alone. It's a team effort. So, consequences and actions. If you can't do your job, you're not qualified to do your job. You feel overwhelmed with your job. You don't like the way your job is going. Find another job. I would strongly encourage those that walked out of the meeting or that can't show up to meetings to resign before it has to go up the chain and you're removed from office. Right now Franklin City Public Schools gave the city of Franklin, as well as the public schools, a black eye based on the behavior and the shenanigans that went on in the last meeting. That was unacceptable behavior. It was rude. It was disrespectful. It was unprofessional, not only to each other, but to your citizens that came to show up, which was just utterly deplorable. However, I tend to be much more of a positive individual, so I'd like to not focus on the negative things that happened at the last meeting. And I would like to thank the four of you that did stay in the meeting, the one on Zoom, but that you did stay in the meeting and listen to what happened. Listen to your citizens' complaints. Listen to the, the solutions, the possibilities, the, the ranting and raving at some points, it seemed like. However, I would also like to thank our student liaison for showing up all the time, sharing with us everything that goes with school, and I love the crowd. Celebrate you. I would also like to thank the Tidewater News for their amazing, non-violent, hears the facts article based off of the insanity at the last meeting. I'd also like to thank city council members. There were three that showed up last time. I believe we have just about everybody in the house right now, which is fantastic. It shows that they care and they're involved as well. And if you'll take a look behind me, you'll see a whole bunch of other people. Most of us don't have children in the school system anymore. I don't. My children are grown up. However, I have little people that I care about, that I volunteer with in their classrooms, that I help in their classrooms. I volunteer anywhere that I'm asked to or that I'm meeting. That's the kind of stuff we need to do together. These people would all agree that if you can't do your job, you need to go. These people want the best for our children, just like I do, just like I hope each one of you do. I'd also like to thank the police department out there, we'll shout it out, because they kept the calm and the peace in the last meeting because it was a little contentious, to say the least. Give me one second. And I'd also like to welcome Dr. Carter.
Thirty seconds, Brenda.
Please use this group of people as an advocate to help you. That's all we're after. That's all we really care about. We want to make your kids happy, healthy, educated, and make life easier for them, better for them, and for us. Have a good day.
Thank you, Brenda. Henry Porter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Hope, Vice Chair Johnson, members of Franklin City School Board, and also to the student liaison. I attended the last meeting, if what that was, it was going to be called. I applaud Chairman Hope for doing his best to conduct a civil meeting. Also to the members that stayed and acted as adults, and also member counsel who attended virtually. But the Ward Three member, Tanya Smith, Ward Four member, Michelle Williams.
Don't use names, please.
Okay, and vice chair, what they did was inexcusable. Even our outgoing superintendent walked out who didn't have anything to lose by leaving. Did this look pre-planned? Yes. Would any member admit that it wasn't? Probably not. The vice chair kept interrupting the chair at the very beginning of the meeting, which was very unprofessional. Then before you could snap your fingers, one by one, they left. Now honestly, you maybe could see one member leaving, but all three? No one had any reason to leave in the manner in which they did. These acts are done for dramatic effect, since it will make for talk for among the residents of Franklin. Is this the look that the school system wants from the leaders who took their oath and are paid to conduct themselves as professionals? There is a saying, keep your house in order, you never know who will stop by. There could have been a visitor that night who may have wanted to relocate, and also they are trying to bring it to the school system or a business that wanted to come here. But after that travesty, no they would not. If anyone I know just walks off the job, there would be serious repercussions. Some here tonight are teachers or have been. How many just will walk out the classroom and quit on the students and the oath that they took? No one. The members who walked out that night did just that. You gave a thumb down to the students and also to the city in which you reside and in which you work. With so much division in our city, you got so mad and this was the point you would make by leaving? But to return to closed session and vote was wrong and also unprofessional. The vice chair even got into a heated tiff with a citizen after closed session. The school more, the school board may be limited in after what they can do regarding the members, but the council members and the constituents in which they serve, they deserve so much better. In closing, those of us who has ever watched the Academy Awards, the president always says, and the Oscar goes to, but this time the Oscar went to each moment that walked out on their job, the students, and the oath in which they took. Thank you for your time.
Clyde Bailey.
I'm Clyde Bailey. Live at 104 Sunset Drive, Franklin, Virginia, 23851. Well, congratulations to the new man. Thank you for stepping up, coming. I'm a lieutenant at well she was at, but um, I want to address that we just along, we got to do better. This is a small town. You can smile and joke, but it's no joke. I'm a father. I'm a grandfather, and I got kids and grandkids that go to these schools. I could have easily took them out, period, because of what's been going on for years. Um, and I'm a taxpayer. I pay y'all. Y'all don't pay me. Y'all don't put no money, y'all don't put no money in my pocket. So for the walkout last week was unacceptable. It was disrespectful, and it wasn't right at all. So on that note, only thing I want to say is that we just got to do better and get better and do the right thing for these kids. You ain't walk out on me. You walk out on them kids. It's not getting the right proper education. Look at these people right here. Some of them gonna tell lies, some of them gonna tell the truth. I'm gonna keep it one hundred. I'm not lying to none of them. I don't come with no lies. I don't come with no, no games. We can, as an adults, we can do that. That's okay. But when it come to these kids, still 12th grade reading on the sixth grade level, that's wrong. So what you gonna do? What they gonna do? They get frustrated, can't go to college. Get, ain't no diploma or some little certificate we giving them. Can't get a job, so what they gonna do? Wine country, selling drugs, or go to prison or die. That's what y'all want? Well, let me tell you something. It's not happening on my watch. You can smile and laugh, but no matter whatever job you go to or wherever the superintendent think that she going to Petersburg, this gonna carry you right to Petersburg. When you say you woke up the giant, you woke him up. I'm gonna tell you that right now. You woke him up. Take it for granted. Take it lightly because you don't even know what you just done. You've really done a lot, and this right here shows. Look right here. This shows. So we need to all get together, and yeah, the parents need to come. We need to get more parents in here. You're right. That's true. Because the teachers can't do it all. But when you passing these kids by, I tell them, I talked to teachers and they said, y'all passing these kids by, even they come an F, you can't fail them? When I was growing up, if you got F, you don't pass. You don't go to the next grade. And y'all think it's a joke. It's not a joke. It's not funny. So you laughing? Okay, you laughing. That's cool, but the giant woke up. I'm telling you right now, the giant woke up. He ain't playing. And I got more people rolling with me. Because honestly, I want to tell us the boycott, to take our kids, don't go to school. For what? Y'all ain't teaching nothing anyway. Why should they go? So now we're gonna get the Wavy Ten down here, because I know how to play the game. The game is being played on a digital on pocket. Same way you took my taxpayer money and they do the right thing by these kids? Oh, it's coming back. Trust and believe all that. It's coming back. So, you know, I know we got a long way to go, but it starts right here within the house. We not might all agree is that, you know, adults, but let's make sure that these kids have a fair shot and get their right education. You know, let, let them have that fair shot instead of saying, hey, they gonna be all right. That ain't my child. And you taking money? That's money it took. Because we paid our bills. Nobody don't give, y'all don't give me no money. Which one of y'all gave me some money? I'm waiting. But I tell you what, though, the buck stops now. Because I didn't know and didn't understand, but now that when you do, you do better. So you got our back. You got our support. What you need, we gonna get these parents together. If I gotta go to all parents' houses myself, I'm gonna do that. So whatever you need, you let us know and we gonna work. I know it ain't gonna be easy. I'm saying, I know it ain't gonna be easy, but it's a try and we got to put in the effort and stop saying forget these kids tomorrow.
That's right.
Call them tired. What you want them out here doing? Y'all calling them, wanna call them crazy. You won't call them, because what you think if they don't have no education? They got a certificate. Talking about they got, there ain't no high school diploma. And you passing them on through? Why is that? We gotta stop that. If they don't do what they supposed to do, then you get with the parent, tell them, nah, you getting left back. Point blank. You gonna pass them on through and say, you all right, you good, and they go out here, can't agree to write. Eighteen, seventeen years old, still reading on the fifth grade, fourth grade level. Are you serious?
Thirty seconds, Clyde.
Well, that's all I got. God bless.
Thank you. Pearlie Banks.
Good evening. My name is Pearlie Banks. I reside at 336 Robin Hood Road here in the city of Franklin to Mr. Holt, to the other school board members, to the student liaison, to the recently elected interim superintendent. As I stand before you tonight, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about what I've heard. I'm concerned about what I've seen. Back in May of 2001, they passed an act and it was called the Act to Leave No Child Behind. And there were four components to that act. It said that it would give the children a healthy start, a head start, a fair start, and a safe start. And one of the things that it said, and I would like to read, is "We can build a nation where families have the support they need to make it at work and at home for every child enters school ready to learn and leaves on the path to a productive future. For babies are likely to be born healthy and sick children have the health care they need. For no child has to grow up in poverty. For all children are safe in their community and every child has a place to call home. And all Americans, not some, but all Americans can proudly say, we leave no child behind." When that act was passed, I don't think that they meant for us just to move children from one level to another. It bothered me when I heard a family man say, my son is 23 years old. He cannot read and he cannot write. He went on to say that he can print his name. This is not quality education. I was in one of your meetings when you said that one of the representatives stated that the pre-K had already been filled and that there were 14 children that was on a waiting list. And my heart began to bleed. Because I understood that if any one of those 14 children do not get into some kind of learning institution before they turn five, they're gonna already be left behind by the time they get into the kindergarten. I have been talking to people, advocating for these children. What can we do to help these 14 children that is on the waiting list? I talked with Mary Bradshaw and she gave me a, she sent me an email saying, looking for childcare. And there is a lot of information out there. There's a lot of money out there. I am asking the citizens of Franklin, I am asking our school board, please, forget your idiocisms and your idiocracies and all that other kind of crazy you got going on. Let's do what's best for our children because they deserve the very best. And I am an advocate for our children. And if it means that getting rid of everybody, get rid of everybody and start with somebody who cares about our children. Our children cannot be an advocate for themselves, but we, the citizens of Franklin, can advocate for them. Thank you.
Asia Ryan. Asia Ryan. One more time. Ms. Ryan, are you here? Okay. Let's move to our next item. Our school board liaison, Janaya Howard. Welcome, Janaya. Let's move to our next item, our school board liaison, Janaya Howard, welcome, Janaya.
Good evening, good evening, board, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Janaya Howard. Janaya, it's a pleasure to issue to our October school board representative. Janaya Howard is a senior at Franklin High School, and it has a dual enrollment student through our partnership with Camp Community College and Todd Water Community College. She is a hardworking and well-rounded student who works hard to accomplish her goals. She is currently a three point six grade point average. She is a two thousand two twenty-two homecoming queen, co-captain of the Franklin High School cheer, cheer team, vice president of the Young Women in Action, National Honor Society in Soccer. After graduation, Janaya plans to go to a four-year college and major in nursing and early childhood education. As you can see, Janaya has plans, and there is no doubt she will be successful in life after graduation. So ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our F, our student of the month, board student of the month, Janaya Howard.
Here's the report for Franklin High School. FHS has completed its comprehensive school improvement plan and set SMART goals for our twenty-two, twenty-three school year. History, seventy-five percent SOL pass rate. Science, seventy-four percent SOL pass rate. English, ninety-five percent SOL pass rate. Math, eighty percent SOL pass rate. Graduation rate, ninety-five percent. Chronic, chronic application rate, fifteen percent. The dropout rate, six percent. CCCRI, eighty-five percent. Teachers have submitted their SMART goals for their first semester based on, based on two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two data. We are preparing for the English eight and English eleven writing test, which will be administered on October eighteen through the twenty-first. We continue to focus on our safety with evacuation drills, fire alarm system updates, administration presence in hallways, teachers at doors during transitions, checking doors to make sure they are locked multiple times a day, having someone at the main entrance screening all visitors, code yellow, red, blue, and bus evacuation drills. Eight students are set to begin our CTE Elite Program at Camp Community College by enrolling in their forklift, clamp, and reach truck class in November. We have eight more registered for December. Entry reports will be distributed on October tenth, the end of the first nine weeks is November seventh. Report cards will be distributed on November sixteenth. Academic Awards Assembly to recognize students in grades ten through twelve who made honor roll or principal's list on their final report card last year was on September twenty-third. We will have an assembly for eighth graders and ninth graders after the first report card. School pictures for students in grades eight through eleven were taken last Monday, October seventeen. Homecoming two thousand twenty-two was a huge success because of great leadership from Mrs. Banks, Ms. Thornton, and Dr. Parsons, and many others. The pep rally, game, and dance were enjoyed by the students. Congratulations to our two thousand twenty-two homecoming king, Jordan Myrick. Congratulations to our twenty-two homecoming queen, Janaya Howard. Please continue to support the amazing students, teachers, and staff at FHS. Here's a report for JP King Middle School. Joseph P. King was completed their bus evacuations. The drill included the evacuations of six individual buses upon arrival. The number of students on each bus varied from four to twenty-seven. All buses were swiftly evacuated in one point six minutes or less. The October fire drill was successful, conducted without any incidents. All students were evacuated from the school, and the entire drill was completed within four minutes. Entry reports will be distributed to parents on October fifth, communicating with their students' progress to up, up to that point. Our student government associations held their elections for officers in September. President, vice president, treasurer, chairperson, and four representatives for each grade level. Our National Junior Honor Society is preparing for our upcoming holiday and toy drive. For the first time in JP King history, we part, we participated in FCPS Homecoming Celebration on the level of voting for Mr. and Mrs. JP King, which is seventh grade, and Prince and Princess of JP King, which is sixth grade. In addition to participating in the theme Spirit Week with FHS, we also held our very own homecoming pep rally as part of our celebration. Professional developments continue for our faculty and staff on topics of developing SMART goals, kernel note-taking, lesson planning, learning targets, blackboard configurations, and use of interpretation of data. Students, faculty, and staff were orange on October ninth, supporting anti-bullying campaigning. JP King Family Engagement and Involvement Event for September was held on the twenty-seventh in the cafeteria and facility by Virginia Living Science Museum. Knowledge shared with students, parents and students, I'm sorry, about turtles, snakes, worms, lizards, and other reptiles. Everyone was treated to dinner of pizza, chips, and drinks. The event was hosted by the FCPS Family Engagement Specialist, Mr. Riddick. Our plus-one art and plus-one physical education courses are flourishing. Seventh grade students meet Monday through Thursday from three fifteen to five fifteen, and these auxiliary courses to earn early high school credits while they're in middle school. In collaboration, the principals of FCPS recorded and posted a video in Parent Square highlighting the importance of attendance at school and the effects it have on students' achievement. The feedback indicates that it was veil, it was well received. The report for SP Morton Elementary School. SP Morton has completed its application to participate in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three spelling bee. The administration team is completing its first round teacher observant, observations and evaluations. This concludes substitutions in the building as well. SP Morton participated with the homecoming activities at, at Franklin High School. We joined in the Spirit Week electing Mr. SP Morton, Jaden Putman, fifth grade. Ms. SP Morton, Brooklyn Rhodes, fifth grade as well. Prince, William Moore, fourth grade, and Princess Georgia, Georgia Peer, fourth grade. We would like to thank, we'd like to welcome, sorry, Ms. Tamika Whitehead Blake, Science Curriculum Specialist. Congratulations to Mr. Gary and his new role as dean, AP, and training at SP Morton. SP Morton participating in Orange Out for Bullying. The teachers and students all were orange to support bullying efforts. We complete third, fourth, and fifth grade student growth assessments. SP Morton started its kindest companion and identified two students last week, Marie Joyner and Akaya Boom. Let's keep the super friends going. Congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Gary on the birth of Harper Emson Gary, who was born on Tuesday, October eleventh at three oh two PM. Our October twenty-two thousand twenty-two, SP Morton will be completing the great shakeout, the earthquake drill. Title one, Family Engagement Night is on October twenty-seven with a focus, Get Lit for Literature, followed by Fall Festivals and Trunks Retreat. This starts at five PM and ends at seven PM.
Janaya, thank you very much. Any questions for her?
Would you give Janaya another hand, please? Janaya, so that you compare for tomorrow, you are free to go if you like, and get ready for school tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janaya. Moving on to our consent agenda, the first item, four point one, is a budget adjustment for OBC grant and JBG grant. It's Mr. Ryder with the Sterious.
Chair, congratulations, Dr. Carter. These two budget adjustments were left off of the last one because we were still getting some final details of, obviously, so the OBC grant, we just have to move it from one place to another. And the JBG grant, this was not put into the budget, this is, this is for the city to correct their books, so they need to just reverse that out. It's just, these two things are basically just accounting corrections. This purchase order is for air conditioning units to be replaced at JP King Middle School. This is how we are using up the remainder of the HVAC grant. Since SP Morton got the lion's share of the grant, there were still dollars left over, so we, we decided that the next air conditioning units in order of urgency for repair or replacement. So with the middle school, so unfortunately, this requires a one hundred percent match, so half of this will come from the grant and half will come from operations. I believe Ms. Moore would be addressing this one.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Johnson, board members, all that are gathered tonight. Alan, September fifteenth at our board meeting, Dr. Stone presented to the board to upgrade the classroom furniture in grades, I'm sorry, kindergarten through second. The board approved for first and second grades to be done first. So as you can see pictured on the left, these are the current older desks that were put in ten years ago. The ones on the right are marker board desks, they have been received. Marker board desk allows students to use dry erase markers to do their adding, to write, and everything on the desk. As teachers are circling, they can see what the children are writing. We're asking for approval for disposal of the old desk, the same way we did the furniture before. The citizens of Franklin will be notified of when, I'm nervous, I'm sorry, caught off guard, I'm so tired. I normally don't speak, so I'm really nervous here. But um, it's approximately two hundred desks that we need to get rid of. It will be given to area, local vendors. If anyone needs them, I'll be reaching out to the academies, to the daycares, the YMCA, Parks and Rec, and putting it out, as well as digital feed, radio, to say, hey, we have this furniture, you have first dibs to come and pick it up. If it's not picked up, we don't have storage to continue to store items that we no longer use, so it will be disposed of. The public will also be notified that they have a specific time as well. So that's the request that's before to go ahead and start the process of disposing. We receive all of the new desks on Monday this week, and we have already started assembling them and switching out classroom by classroom.
Just for clarification, the city offices would get first choice, and nonprofits, second choice, and anything else would be surplus, correct?
That is correct. And Mr. Holt, we've already discussed possibly holding a Saturday event for the public to be able to come out on a Saturday. It will be on the blacktop as before, they'll have an opportunity to come and pick it up and take it away. So it'll be free, pick up, take away. The school board will not be responsible for taking it to anyone's home or delivering furniture. And after that, then the remaining items that don't get picked up will be then disposed of.
Thank you, Tammy, any questions? Can we entertain a motion for all three, or do you want to separate them?
I'm okay moving to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to discuss four point four first, the playground equipment?
I don't have a four point four on that.
I don't either.
Oh, okay, I apologize, I have an open pre-.
We have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Any abstentions? That motion carries. Minutes for approval, we have quite a few, June the second, June sixteenth, June thirtieth, April eighteenth, September first, and September fifteenth. I'll give you a few moments to look over those, I think we've already had a chance to see those, and entertain a motion.
Chairman, hold on, I move to table five point five and five point six for our next meeting.
There's a motion and a second to table September first and September fifteenth. Minutes, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Okay, now we have three in June and one in August.
I would like to separate five point four from the others, please.
Okay, we're gonna vote on five point four separate, do we have a motion for that one? It's August the eighteenth.
I move to approve five point four minutes from August eighteenth meeting.
Do we have a second? That fails for a second. About five point one and five point two and five point three.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for five one, five two, and five three.
Thank you, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve minutes for June second, June sixteenth and June thirtieth signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries. Financial report, we're back to you, Mr. Ryder.
Here with the vouchers, I believe. And these are the vouchers for September. Barely, barely normal, nothing, nothing really out of the ordinary. I reviewed, I have reviewed all of these. The only large ticket item is a CSEP bill, nearly a hundred and fifty-six, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's paid to the Norfolk Public Schools because that's the CSEP sponsor. That's down on the fifth page. Other than that, these are all fairly normal bills. Yeah, the capital lease on forty-four thousand dollars on the ninth page, or the sixth page, it's only eight pages. And so, a snattering of grant expenditures, all normal payments for the month of September.
Any questions on the vouchers?
Can you scroll back to five, page five, please?
Page five. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Ryder, can you remind me what the, the payment to Norfolk Public Schools are?
That's for the joint special education services that they, that's the co-op, kind of that renders some special education services to specific schools.
Okay.
It's, it's just billed through the Norfolk Public Schools.
Yes, okay, thank you, recall.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Ryder, financial report.
All right, the September financials have been prepared. We fulfill our obligation to report to the board on a monthly basis. Sure, then one, two, three, but apparently it's one, two, one, these financial, the last statement there, these financials contain the first full month of the ten-month employee payroll. So what this is, is- So what this is, is, um, what we do is we put twenty-five percent of the year has, has gone by, three, three twelfths, um, July, August, September. And so under the, under the yellow banner is the prior year. Uh, our, our prior year financials are complete now. Um, and so at the end of September, uh, under the blue banner is, uh, where we're at. Uh, I thought I would, I thought I, this year I would do something that's slightly different. To the right of the green bar is the original budget that the board approved back in May, twenty twenty-two. Um, and so that does not match the thing under the blue heading because we, you know, all of those amendments that your folks approved at the last meeting, you know, we put them into the computer. So, um, the only thing that really changed on the revenue side was the state funding figure. So it went from eight million, eight up to ten million. And then, uh, the expenses are starting to, uh, roll in, uh, fairly normal. Uh, you don't have percentages higher, like twenty-five percent is just kind of a, 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 a vague guide of where we kind of should be. Some of these are right on, some are within a few points, you know? So for example, instruction, twenty-five percent of the year has gone in time, but, you know, September was the first month of true teacher payroll, so that's why it's only fifteen percent. So that, the instruction salary, S and Bs for salary and benefits, that line will always lag behind the percentage of time that has passed. Uh, it'll be like that all year long until June. Um, you know, and some of them are over the twenty-five percent that ordinarily, you know, that, you know, raise eyebrows like, for example, admin other. Uh, we, we've got forty percent of our budget spent with only twenty-five percent of the year gone. That's because we pay, uh, one-time annual, uh, purchases, July, August, and September. Some of those we, we pay for annual subscriptions to for software, especially down in the technology down there. Uh, third line from the bottom, where you got forty-five percent of your budget spent and only twenty-five percent of the year has gone. That's, that's very typical, it's normal, um, because that percentage will now come down with each month that you go by and you don't pay for annual, annual fees and annual subscriptions. So there's nothing here, nothing in this income statement that's out of the ordinary. It's perfectly on track and it's got about a four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar surplus right now. There's been no activity in the textbook fund. We don't even fund this until we get all the money in from the state. Somewhere around April or May, I write a check to the textbook fund and, and the seventy thou- seventy-one thousand will come in. It's, it's coming in, in the fund ten, and then I write a check and I, I, I push it over into the textbook fund. The next one is the cafeteria. Um, and that, you know, that deficit, that's fine, you know, which you have to understand is we pay these people in July and August to provide meals for summer school. Um, you know, the meals aren't nearly as high as during the normal school year. Uh, and again, in September, you serve all the meals, but then you don't get the money until October. So, uh, so, you know, almost all of that deficit was, uh, cleared up when we received, in, in this month, in October, when we received the, the billing from the USDA. The grants, uh, just a normal, normal income statement, um, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That's what we spent in, in September. And then we will receive that money in October, putting it down to zero. But then you incur all the bills in October, and so you'll always have three or four hundred thousand dollar. You'll always have a three or four hundred thousand dollar deficit until you start spending that, uh, very large capital line, the third one from the bottom. When you start, when you see that thing start spiking up, then you'll see larger deficits, uh, and it, and it, you know, affects the cash flow a little bit, uh, but then, you know, they always come in in the next month. So then the final income statement there is just the overall income statement. We're supposed to be at a, you know, zero surplus deficit, and we're about forty-four thousand dollars with the grants. So, any questions on the financials for September? All right, hearing none. Um, the air purification initiative. Um, I had, uh, uh, was that the September thirtieth meeting, apparently? I, I presented this thing, but now I updated it. Um, if you guys, if everybody recalls, we had, uh, two grants, the HVAC grant and the Vista grant, uh, both, uh, that were able to purchase, uh, either, the HVAC grant could either, either purchase air conditioners or air purifiers, and the Vista grant has seventy-eight thousand dollars for just air purifiers. Well, FEMA came along and told us that they'd pay for ninety percent. Uh, so the update now, uh, I'm sorry to report that we did not get the FEMA grant. We applied for it. I grade out all the stuff from the prior one. So the conclusion back in September was I'll apply for the grant and if, and if we get it, fine. Um, plan A was if we did get it. Plan B is if we didn't get it. So on the next slide is we didn't get it, um, because of Hurricane Ian. Category five hurricane comes along just, just in the time that they were considering our application, so. Um, so no money for the, for the air purifiers. And now the grant period, and now that grant, uh, time is close. So, plan B is that we will use the money, like, uh, we issued the purchase order for the air conditioning units at the, uh, middle school. So we use up the CSL FRF grant. And then instead of buying sixty air purifiers with the Vista grant money, we can only buy thirteen. So, uh, we're, we're issuing the purchase order for the fr- for the air purifiers tomorrow, and they will come in and, uh, Dr. Carter and I will figure out which schools they will be placed at. Any questions on that? The air purifier contract.
So FEMA held back some money in view of hurricane season. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I asked them why we, we didn't get our money, and she's like, hey, there's only so much that can go around, and hurricane disaster relief is a lot more important to us right now than air purifiers. I thanked them for their honesty, and that was that.
Was this the, I'm sorry, was, was this the grant that we had already missed the deadline for? That we were trying for anyway?
Yes, yeah. We, we were, we were having and trying to open it back up, and just, we just weren't successful. We tried.
Uh, Mr. Ryder, is there any data to, to recommend which, which school to use the air purifiers? I mean, is it more beneficial for the elementary school versus the high school?
Hmm. No, I, I hadn't thought of that. I just, I just saw that we had these wonderful Tepa UV light purifiers available to us. The actual placement of them, Mr. McCreary, that, that actually we haven't talked about that too much because we, we had kind of wanted to figure out how many are we gonna get?
Right.
So now that we know, um, yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. Um, write that down for the finance, maybe as a topic to discuss. Placement of the air purifiers. Okay, I will bring that to us on, on, on the twenty-sixth.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryder?
Uh, yes, Mr. Ryder, will you be, I know we had talked about the, um, additional fronts from the state for capital improvements. Are you, are you still planning to address that yet?
Yes, uh, oh, not tonight. Uh, I'm meeting with, um, Tammy Moore and probably Dr. Carter on Monday at three o'clock and preparing the entire capital, um, spending plan, um, for next Wednesday's finance committee meeting.
Okay.
So in, in less than a week, you, you, myself, and Mr. Holt will be, will be discussing all that.
Well, the, um, I, I had, uh, asked the city manager, because I believe that loan for the roofs, the, uh, was approximately four, well, I guess at four million dollars. So I asked, uh, because I believe the loan went, because loan went through the city, asked the city manager how much savings, um, with interest would be made, would we save? The city would save, the citizens would save if we, uh, use that extra million dollars from the state, uh, to go directly to that loan, to pay down the loan. So if we paid a million, that would be, and she gave me a figure of annual savings of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred. And if we used a full one point two million to pay down the loan, it would save, uh, thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Let's put that on our agenda Wednesday. Can we do that?
Absolutely. I've actually got, have the agenda I'm working on right now.
Well, is there anything for, for me to make, moving, making a motion now?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we, we use at least one million of that one point two million, apply it to pay down the loan for the roofs.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think it's a good idea.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Jerry. Anything else for Mr. Ryder?
Yes, um, the last item that, I believe it's the last item, yes. Uh, the last item is that the fiscal year twenty twenty-two financial statements are finally complete. We have the, um, we have the, the full audit results. Um, the city was sent these documents on Monday so they could incorporate them into their financial statements. Um, this is a one hundred and forty-page, you can scroll along if you'd like, Tammy. Uh, this is a one hundred and forty-page PDF, um, that I've already had posted to our website. There we go. And, um, so you can, uh, I, on the next, on the next slide, I'll show you where you can go and kind of look at it yourself. It's, it's a lot of information that usually is for, um, you know, bond rating agencies, you know, all kinds of debt structures and a lot, a lot more financial information than most laypeople would even bother reading. Um, and so, uh, but, but what, what the audit is, is, uh, the auditors are hired and paid to examine our processes, procedures, and documents and transactions in order for the auditors to render an opinion on the financial soundness of our, of our, of our statements. Um, and they will either issue a unqualified opinion, which is referred to as a clean opinion, there are no qualifications, or a qualified opinion, meaning, you know, the, the financial statements are presented fairly with some reservations. But we do not have a qualified opinion. Ours are clean, they have an unqualified opinion. And, um, if anybody wishes to peruse them, uh, they, um, I thought I'd show you where they are on the, on the, uh, our website, under my, under the financial, uh, webpage, under financial reports. And, um, on the twenty-first page, you'll, you'll find the balance sheet for all of our funds. On page twenty-three, the revenue expenses. And eh, on page thirty-four, if you're interested, which, which revenues were accrued in the prior year. So the fi- the fiscal year twenty-two, it's in the books. It's, it's history now. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Ryder, did this, um, report, does this address, was this an audit? And it include the activity funds at the schools?
This one is for the overall division. Uh, so two financial statements were, were issued. The, uh, the, uh, the activity funds were their own separate one, and this is a separate one. And they both have their own audit opinions as well, and they, they both have, uh, unqualified opinions.
Okay. Well, my understanding is that there were issues with the school activity fund this year. There were findings that were, uh, very similar, if not the same type of issue as last, found last year.
They were. There were. And, uh, in, in the two, uh, actually in all of the schools, all of the people that were doing the bookkeeping are all, have been replaced. Um, the hi- the high school had the, the more serious, uh, comments, uh, but the auditors were quick to point out that, uh, all, most of, most to all of the problems that they discovered during the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-two happened in the first six months, uh, of the year. And in the last six months, they did note that the problems, uh, had been corrected.
Okay, so they were, they've been corrected since the, the changeover in personnel, or was it just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, it wa- it was, it was a changeover in personnel. And, um, and I'm, I'm glad, I am, I thank the auditors for, you know, acknowledging that the things have been corrected. Um, unfortunately, you know, for, you know, five or six months, they were still doing bad, bad accounting practices and procedures. Uh, and I will, I will point out also that there was never any money missing. There was never any dollars, there was no fraud, there was no, nothing like that. It's just very sloppy accounting.
Do we have additional, uh, training and safeguards to, on a continuing basis?
Yes, uh, and our accounts, accounting specialist Angela, our account specialist in the office, um, she meets with these folks on a weekly basis now. I mean, she used to walk, she was, she used to come in at the end of the month, you know, kind of check over things. Uh, but now it, it had become too, uh, serious that we now, actually, she's over there, um, at least on a weekly basis, and she, she hits each school. And, um, and actually, she's doing the bank reconciliations, not the schools. We've removed the bank reconciliation process from the building level.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
That is it for me. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right.
Next we have curriculum and instruction, schools improvement plans. Dr. White.
Good evening, Board. Dr. White had to, uh, go to an emergency, um, so I will take, uh, facilitate. So I believe first, uh, we have S.P. Morton. Mr. Spain. Good evening, Chair Holt, Vice Chair Johnson, members of the desk, and the audience. Uh, my name is Charles Spain. I'm the principal at S.P. Morton Elementary School. And, Tammy, you gonna control this or am I? Okay. So what I've actually put together here is a look at, um, information from the, the school. Uh, in, in our having to create a, um, a school improvement plan from VDOE, all of the level threes, which are in red, uh, we had to address and to come up with a plan to say how we're gonna move the, uh, those from the red to hopefully the green. Uh, in English, uh, for S.P. Morton, uh, we did well in math, that's our strong point. And, uh, for science, this is our second year in science, and only the fifth grade will actually count towards the accreditation. Achievement gaps, you'll see there, um, it's, uh, again, the English, uh, and math for the subgroups, and I'll talk about the subgroups in a minute. But the, the big one here for, for us, uh, overall is the, um, that, that which impacts everything else that we do is, uh, the attendance. And, and this is my, my first year, I'm two months in, so bear with me, everybody. So these are our, uh, gap areas. And I don't know if you can see that, but primarily we're talking about our African-American students in English, economically disadvantaged in English, and our students with disabilities in English as well, and also the student with disabilities in math, uh, for a level three gap. So we have talked about how we're going to improve these scores. And I sat with, uh, Dr. White and, uh, Mr. Walters to come up with how, what this actually looks like in terms of the monies and then what percentages we're looking at. We were actually waiting to see if, uh, VDOE was going to release those, uh, growth areas though, for the, um, the, what is it called? The percentage growth, percentage of growth as part of the accreditation process. And so with that, uh, at S.P. Morton, this is where we currently are, and this is our, our goals to actually improve by the percentages here. So by the end of June twenty twenty-three, the number of proficient students in reading will increase by twenty percent. And so what we did here, and see, last year, you see that they have a sixty-two point one five percent of students, um, scoring, passing the SOLs in, in reading. And so we want to increase that this, uh, this year. So we looked at, uh, where our, our scores were in third, fourth, and fifth. And so we want to increase that this, uh, this year. So we looked at, uh, where our our scores were in third, fourth, and fifth grade. But even looking at that, we had to go back further, right? Because we all know that good reading does not start in third, fourth, and fifth grade. So we started looking at our pre-K, K one and two. Now, I was a math major, but I was a a reader too, right? And so we know that in everything that our students do, the reading impacts it. And so we want to, uh, start looking at our pre-K, K one and two, because even looking at that data, we found that our pre-K students were not coming in with that, the the number of words, sight words that actually there. And so we have to beef up that so that when they progress further, we can get to that that percentage. And, uh, in math, that that's that's generally our, uh, has been our strong area there. And so we want to still see more of our students getting to, uh, those higher levels of math. And one of the things that's gonna happen here, again, we we're looking at the 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 computation, uh, but when they look at this exam, they have to read it. And then they have to pick those problems apart and set it up so that you actually can solve the problem. But again, the reading stands in the way. And so everything that we are looking at now is making certain that we are looking at the assessment, making certain that the words are not unfamiliar. And, uh, and I'll I'll share what I did with students today within all the classes, so we can get a good idea about what's happening, all right? Uh, the other is our science, and and again, I'm that math-science geek person. And so what we did was look for a person, and we were trying to find someone, and we found her right here in Franklin. Uh, she's from Southampton. She's our, uh, science curriculum specialist in elementary. And she, uh, was a chemistry major and a math minor in college. Uh, phenomenal. And so she'll be working with our students and teachers, because, uh, what we're finding too is that our our teachers need that assistance and professional development there. So we're gonna use her in two ways so that we can get the maximum growth out of our students in that science. Um, and the big one, and this is huge, and I was glad to hear Mr. Banks, I think it was, talk about this, getting parents involved. Our students were, we had fifty-eight percent of our students who were considered chronically absent. Fifty-eight percent. And so if they're not in school, you all, we can't educate them. We can't get them what they need. And so this is, uh, our all-out yell, and this is where, uh, I ask, uh, Dr. Stafford and Mr. Phelps, let's let's join together in our efforts to put out this message about the importance of having our students at school all day, every day, uh, so that we can reach this goal because we have. And since we started our, um, our little math initiative at school, the students are now asking for more math, right, and they be, and more reading because they're seeing success in the things that they're doing. Uh, and that's, and that's where we're gonna see our numbers take off because of what we're actually doing with the students there. Uh, but again, we we can't do it if they're not there, all day, every day. And so that's, uh, and so we have a a big campaign that we're doing, at least the school principals are one, and then our own internal, so that we can have the students there at the school and reach these goals, which are attainable, because we know our kids are excited about learning and want to learn while they're at school. And and that's all I have for myself. Port you.
Any questions for Mr. Spain?
Um, I do. Um, I like to see, like, the breakdown of the gap groups and, like, the achievement and the different things. I was wondering if you know if the correlation from the absenteeism is similar to the student groups that are identified on, um, those achievement gaps with English and math? And if so, is there any talk about how to target those groups as far as the absenteeism? I mean, I know it's important for everybody to be there, but if we're noticing that a significant part of the students with disabilities, um, are are not showing up, or the economically disadvantaged, or, um, the black students aren't, like, can we focus our efforts there? Has that been looked at?
Right, so we have, and Ms. Phillips, uh, Ms. Phillips is part of our, uh, group that we actually are, we've come up with a plan to address the absenteeism, and we are addressing it in multiple ways. Uh, and so there is a detailed plan that we have, um, because we we're seeing that there are patterns, right? And there are certain individuals who are there. There is a correlation, by the way. There is. And so, uh, we can, we're gonna bite off a little at a time until we get it, because it's instant, it's a heavy lift. It's a big lift. Because it's been that way for a while. When I look back over the years, it's this actually has been that way. And so, uh, with our plan that we're that we're working on, I think we're seeing benefits of it, because we're getting those parents in to see what it is that we can do. And we're not looking at it from a punitive perspective.
Right.
We're looking at it from a supportive. And now, and once we do that, we can find out what's the problem, and then we can help the parents there. Because if we if we embarrassed, we're not gonna get it done. But if we come from a supportive side, then we can get them there and get it done. Uh, because I don't want to believe that there are parents who don't want their kids in school. I don't. Uh, so, but I'm a realist too. I'm looking at the numbers and I'm looking at the action, and then from there, we can make a determination about who's actually serious about moving through with our process that we're creating for them. And, uh, the last part of that is, we're looking at it in terms of wraparound services for the school, because most often times, we're seeing that there are issues there that the community services can actually help. And, uh, and so we're looking at that in particular, you know, when we look at social services and things of that nature, then other outreach that we can actually have. So we we do have a plan, and we're gonna start, we've already started executing extended benefits of it. I'll say that.
Thank you.
And and also, I would like to add that we're at ninety percent as of week six. We're, as you know, we're giving you, uh, the board a chart and and letting parents and letting the board know each week what is going on as far as attendance. So, parents, yes, we do need your support in getting the kids to school, but I also will be happy to tell you that we're also at S.P. Morton, ninety percent attendance so far. So I, we need you to continue to to get your kids to school, so that fifty-eight percent, uh, will be reversed. And I just wanted to let you know that that, uh, it is working, and I and I appreciate the support so far, uh, in getting the kids to school.
And we do make a, uh, a effort to every week send parents videos about the importance of it. And so that they hear our voice either from parent square or in, uh, text messages that come through the system, and also everybody knows it's a constant message. And it's gonna continue there until we get to what we want to see, and that's our goal, our goal, our goal is ninety-five percent. So that way, we can see these numbers dissipate slowly, over time.
Um, Ms., uh, Dr. Spain, um, you talked about the reading. Uh, this past week, uh, I, I'm on the, um, I don't know if it's, I guess, a committee. It's for, uh, they W H R O, the H R E T A, um, which our division is a member of. And, um, they they provide, uh, various education materials, and I don't know, are you familiar with that?
No, I'm not.
So, um, the, a few of the things, they they have, uh, a large history program, uh, resource materials and teaching materials, but also, uh, reading in particular. And, uh, so that's, that would be another resource, potential resource that we already, the division is already participating in. So, um, I have, we have mentioned that to Dr. White, our curriculum specialist, so I would encourage you to reach out to her to find out if that will help additionally. And, um, also, I I wanted to know, um, 'cause I do, I recognize the importance of reading, because it affects every a- aspect of our life as we grow up. And, um, are there, does the division have tools or resources to to, um, make it easier to bring reading into the home as part of, like, a benefit to the whole family?
Right, so with our family engagement, uh, Mr. Reading, we were actually working on our, um, engagement nights, but also, uh, looking at activities that can go home with the students, for parents to be a part of what they're doing in class, and syncing that to, you know, things that happen at the school.
Right.
Uh, and so that will be the the piece that will hopefully change that whole process about what reading is, and then bring back the love of reading.
Yes.
Uh, we also, um, hired a, just got a, um, a new reading, a li- a library specialist, who will bring that, the charge that I have for her is to bring that reading back to life like it once was, and make it fun, uh, for our students and not, because, you know, our students are techies, and everything has to be fast, but the but to bring back the love of reading, and then what that does for students academically, and once they see those successes, we feel like it'll change over time. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Spain. Welcome here.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, good evening. I am Dr. Chandler, and I have a pleasure observing as the proud principal of Joseph P. King Medical. I'm going to be sharing with you this evening about our continuous school improvement plan. Our continuous school improvement plan is based on our school quality profile report, and there are indicators on there that that gives us our results on our performance for this past previous school year. And that's what we focus on for the upcoming school year, because it determines where our, uh, action steps should be and where our focus should be. So for our school quality index, the focus is that we should have, let me see, what we should focus on this year are these indicators as shown on the screen. So under academic achievement, for English, we are at a level two. Mathematics, we are level one, and science, we ended the year in level three, and I'll talk a little bit more about that science. For achievement gaps, for achievement gaps in English, we we, um, ended the year in level two. And for mathematics, level one, and then for student engagement, just as, uh, Mr. Spain spoke about, chronic absenteeism, we are in the red with level three. So when we look at academic achievement, the science here, we have two focuses in our school improvement plan, and the focus is English and chronic absenteeism. Now, we definitely had to have English, because it is an academic focus, and we were in level two. Because of the waiver that everyone got in chronic absenteeism, even though it is in the red, we didn't have to make it one of our focuses, but because it is so important, because it is so very important that the students attend school, that they are there every day to receive direct instruction from their teachers, we felt like it's best practices to keep our hand on the pulse of attendance this year, so that next year at the, uh, when the results are delivered, we will be out of the red and hopefully in the green. The same thing with science. In science, we are at a level three, but that's an eighth-grade SOL test, and we no longer have the eighth graders in our building. They are at the high school now. So this will not be a focus for us, since we don't have the eighth graders. But that eighth-grade science SOL test is cumulative. It covers sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade information. And so we have to, best practices show that we should keep it, um, keep our eye on it as well, ensuring that our sixth graders get what they need, our seventh graders get what they need, so that when they make it to the high school in the eighth grade, and they have to take that SOL test, and it's cumulative, that they have what they what they need. Moving to our, let me go back here to our academic gaps. English is level two. Here, this shows our ac- academic achievement gaps. Everything in yellow, the first column is English, so everything in yellow, um, is a level two. And the group that are in level two are our African-American students, our economically disadvantaged students, our Hispanic students, and our, uh, students with with disability. So those are our, as you asked earlier, Mrs. Johnson, those are our groups that, um, that we will be focusing on to ensure that we get them out of yellow into green, and that's for English. When you look at math, we are pretty good. Everything is is in the green, or that subgroup was too small to be calculated. As a result of our focuses for for this year, and as I said, we were focusing, we are focusing on English and chronic absenteeism, we wrote our SMART goals, and because that's somewhat small, I made it as large as I could to fit on the, um, screen, on the page. But I'll read it briefly to you, so you'll get the highlights of what our SMART goals are. So for English, we have three here, and the gist of it is to increase the SOL pass rate of our students in English by ten percentage points, based on the results of this past previous year. So at the end of this past year, we were at sixty-five percent. If we increase that by ten percentage points, we'll be at seventy-five percent, which will land us in level one, in the green, which is where we want to be for the upcoming school year. An increase of twenty-three percentage points would be, I'm sorry, for our students with disability, for that subgroup, for our students with disability. At the end of last year, we were at fifty-two percent, so an increase of twenty-three percentage points would put us at seventy-five percent, landing us in level one for that specific subgroup. The second goal, each subgroup, our African-American, economically disadvantaged, students with disability, and our Hispanic students, all of those groups that were in yellow, will achieve level one status by either achieving a seventy-five percent adjusted pass rate or by reducing the failure rate by ten percent. So there are two ways that you can ad- advance. You can advance by actually the points going up to to reach the seventy-five percent mark that the state has set, or you can just decrease your failure rate by ten, ten percent. So either one of those would would get us in the green for our subgroups. And then lastly, that third group for English, overall, we have, um, we would need a hundred and twenty-two of our a hundred and sixty-three students, both sixth and seventh grade, in English reading, um, to pass. So that is, for sixth grade, we need sixty-two of our eighty-three sixth graders, and for seventh grade, we'll need sixty of our eighty students to score four hundred or better on their reading SOL to achieve that seventy-five percent benchmark. So we go into the school year with the end in mind, already knowing what we need, already knowing what marks we have to achieve, already knowing what we are aiming for. And so we start out with these action go, I'm sorry, with these SMART goals for English. Right next to it, because we are also focused on chronic absenteeism, we've written a SMART goal for it as as well, and I'll go over the highlights of it. Joseph P. King would decrease the number of students who have an absenteeism rate of ten percent or higher by twenty-nine percentage points. The percentage of students at or above ten percent absenteeism last year was fifty-one percent. A decrease of thirty-six percentage points would be would be fifteen percent, landing us in level one. So we have the same goal as Mr. Mr. Spain spoke about. We're all focused on absenteeism. We're all focused on moving, on ensuring that our students attend school every day and all day. Another issue is when they do come to school, some of them are picked up early, so they are missing instruction from those, uh, from from those classes. And depending on how early they are picked up, then it affects our our attendance as well. So we want them there every day, but we but we need them there the en- entire day. So those are our SMART goals, and when we give you a goal, we're gonna tell you about our s- action steps to achieve those those goals. Okay, so for our English domain, our action plan, everything starts with instruction, everything with, uh, quality in instruction. So in order to ensure that we achieve those those goals, we start out by by making sure that our teachers are well-equipped and prepared to write tight lesson plans, in indicating what will be done from the time the students cross the threshold until the time that they exit. We move on to ins- and providing them feedback on those lesson plans and monitoring that that feedback is implemented. Then we move on to the importance of formal and informal observations with feedback. We have a series of meetings, our professional learning meetings, our data meetings, our faculty meetings, ensuring that, um, the administration is at the table with them when the planning is is going on to, um, to move them, to move everyone in the right direction, again, to achieve our our goals. We have a series of ongoing professional developments, um, assessments are given weekly, because we feel like when information is taught, we can't go two weeks, three weeks, four weeks down before we assess our students to determine if they got it. It's a little bit too late. It's a little bit too late then. So, our assessments are weekly. When information is taught and they are assessed to, to determine if they got it, if they didn't, what are we going to do a- about it? How are we going to spiral that information back, back through? How are, are we going to present it to them differently? Because if you keep doing the same thing, you keep getting the same results. So, how's it going to be re-taught to try to recoup those students who didn't get it the, the first time? So, a series of, uh, assessments. And when you give an assessment, there's some data that is, um, given from that. So, we have professional developments on the use and interpretation of data. But also, uh, ensuring that our teachers are using that to tier our students, from tier one, tier two, and tier three. Tier ones are the ones who, um, who got it. They scored eighty or better. Uh, tier twos are, uh, sixty to seventy-nine. Those are our bubble students. Those are the ones who could go either way. We don't want them to slide past that sixty, to slide down. So, we have strategies in place to work with them and give them the scaffolding that, that they need to ensure that they stay there and move up to the next, next level. And then our tier three students are anyone who scores fifty-nine or below, anything past a sixty. Those are the ones that we, um, target intensely. Those are the ones that we, um, have tutoring for. Those are the ones that we put our, um, the others too, but, but definitely those that we, um, put into tutoring, that we put into small groups, that we help everyone, like our curriculum specialists or our inclusion teachers of our, um, push into classrooms and, and work with them in detail. So, that's the action plan for, for English. There are some more steps there, but I don't want to take up all of the, the time. For chronic absenteeism, when we give a goal, we give action, action steps to achieve that, that goal. And so, these are some of the, I'll go over just a few. These are a couple of our action plans to address chronic absenteeism. Like Mr. Spain said, the three principals put out a message highlighting the importance of, um, our students coming to school. But in-house, working with, with our truancy officer, we ensure that our teacher's attendance is verified daily because it's so important that we catch it if there are any errors, that we catch it that day and not, um, anytime later. Those are followed by phone calls. And I'm not sure if any of you have ever received a phone call about your child being absent. Um, I heard a phone call. Or if you've ever received a call about your, your child being absent. They're followed by phone calls home to the parents. We run three, five, and six-day reports and print out letters to mail home to parents, letting them know that, uh, this is how many days your child has, has missed and we have to get on this immediately. Then there's another round of follow-up phone calls. We utilize our truancy, uh, well, not our truancy officer, our attendance, uh, officer there in our meetings with, with parents, um, in making home visits and making phone calls and then referrals, uh, if there needs to be, be one. And then we ensure that everything is documented on our spreadsheet in, in Power School. All right. So, you've seen our goals, you've heard our action steps, some of our action plan to get them there. This is just a few pictures, just to show some of our meetings I spoke about. What you see at the top is one of our data meetings. And I talked about how important the data is to ensure that we are moving in the right direction. Um, below is one of our PLC meetings. And then right off to the side, that's pre-service, when we called our people in before, uh, the school year started to get them acclimated and used to the curriculum, the, uh, framework, and the pacing guide, as well as the blueprints. So, this is what I mean by starting out with that tight instruction. It drives everything. When I talk about absenteeism, these are some of the pictures showing what we do to, um, make school fun and to attract our students to come each and every day. So, um, one is our students who co-anchor the morning show, the morning announcement show with me each and every morning. Uh, right beneath that is what Mr. Spain said about the video we sent out in Parent Square, all of the principals there. Above that, student ambassadors, where we try to get our students involved in clubs and activities so that they will look forward to coming to, to school, to belonging to, um, a, an organization when they're there. At the bottom there, where you see that smiling face kite, that was a poetry unit that the students, uh, read and worked on in their English classes. And then to, again, make it fun, they, after that poetry unit, one of the poems was about flying kites and how the wind takes it up higher and higher and higher and how you can overcome, uh, any challenges that, that you face. So, then we had the students to put together kites and we took them outside to fly them. So, the fun things like that, that it's not just learning, but when you come to school, you can have fun with it as well. And then over on the, um, in the last picture on the right, that was one of our dances. I think it was the eighth grade formal. And how did we tie attendance to that? There was a certain amount of days that the students could, had to attend school, could not miss if you were going to, to participate in that. So, every opportunity we get, we stress attendance and how they have to, um, attend school, how important it is. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Stafford?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Let me tell you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, um, school board. Encourage you to be here every time we have a meeting, every time we have a PTA meeting, every time we have a ballgame, every time we have a community, a, a group of parents on a committee to get involved. Let's keep this level of participation up and don't just let it be a one-time thing. And I, actually, we can increase the participation, hopefully. So, a picture says a thousand words. Can I use one of your pictures?
Yes.
Okay. I have a presentation too, but I liked something in J.P. King's presentation. So, you see her picture there of the, um, the data, we call it data PLCs, professional learning communities. I think this is, um, teachers, the top left-hand corner, you, you've got teachers being led by administrators. What, the point I'm trying to make is, when we have high turnover and people leaving at the end of each year, all that, um, knowledge that's gained, all that professional development, if we don't treat our employees right, and we, and it's a fine line between treating employees right and holding them accountable. But the, these professionals here, we need them to stay year after year and get more and more. If, if, if Dr. Stafford is constantly having to re-train her staff and, um, re-teach, first of all, how to even analyze data and then how to apply the data in the classroom to benefit the students, when you're always starting over, that's part of our problem. I mean, I'm just trying to, because that right there is not just a picture. These are, um, professionals at work. And these are the people that are in front of our students. And, and, and we, we just need to keep the good ones and we need to hold the ones accountable that aren't and, 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 um, and move on. I, I just, I felt like that was a powerful slide to me when I saw those people working. Because that is hard work. Okay. I don't know if I made a point with that or not, but it, it rang true with me. Okay. All right, um, Franklin High School's data. Of course, the way the state does their color-coded system, green is what you want, that's level one. This comes from our SOL scores and, and from some other data sources. Um, this, the, this is our data pre-COVID at Franklin High School. So, this is based on the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. High schools have a few more, um, indicators they have to meet to make accreditation in addition to English and achievement, uh, gaps in English and math and science. We also, and chronic absenteeism, we also have to, um, meet the benchmark for graduation and completion index, which lots of times we call our graduation rates, even though it's a little more complicated with the math than just a percentage. Um, also dropout rate and then college, career, and civic readiness index. You can see that in two thousand eighteen-nineteen, um, and lots of times with school improvement, we go straight to the level twos and level threes. But for just a minute, um, let's look at and celebrate the achievement that our students at Franklin High School, um, the level achievement they had for English. And I'm going to give you some real numbers in a minute instead of just colors. Science, chronic absenteeism, graduation and completion index, dropout rate, and CCCRI. Math was our struggle that year, um, especially with our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged students. So, we were at, pre-COVID in eighteen-nineteen, we had two areas that were really big as far as our school improvement plan. Not saying we can't improve in any of the, of the green levels because you, unless you're a hundred percent, you can always improve. But, um, it, you can see how we were prior to COVID. Then last year's data. I just want to make the point that, yes, we have some areas of concern, but even with dealing with COVID, we're still level one for English. And when I say level one, because like, like I said lots of times with school improvement plans, you go straight to what you need to improve on. I mean, that's the point of it. But I think we need to dispel something in the room here tonight that I'm feeling is that people, that students in Franklin City Public Schools aren't being educated and they're not achieving. The data from the Virginia Department of Education says otherwise in a lot of areas. So, let's go through the actual data instead of just the feelings behind some of this. For all students at Franklin High School, last year, so we're not talking about years ago in the glory days in the nineteen-eighties and all that stuff. Um, last year's data, two thousand twenty-one-twenty-two, in English, we had ninety point nine percent of our students passed the SOL for English eleven, reading and writing. And not just, that, that's the overall number, but our black students were eighty-nine point five percent. Economically disadvantaged, which we know lots of students go into multiple categories. Some of them are in three categories. You could be, you know, African-American, economically disadvantaged, and a student with disability all at one time. And you're going into three categories. So, um, economically disadvantaged, the pass rate was eighty-nine point three. Hispanic were too small to get a number. We have some Hispanic students, but it's too small to calculate. Students with disabilities, seventy-three point three percent. That's one of the highest rates in the state if you want to compare us to other school divisions as far as special education students passing the reading test. And don't take my word for it. All this is public knowledge on the Virginia Department of Education website. You can look up any school in Virginia and see this same color code system. So, please compare us, um, before you just assume that nobody's learning at Franklin High School. Yes, I do take this stuff personally, I'm sorry. Um, and our white students were a hundred percent last year for, for, um, English eleven reading. Now, this year, we have the eighth graders that will go into our data too. So, English, we're strong. And I'll, I'll put our numbers up against anybody in English. And that, we're strong because we have a strong English department that has been there for a, a good while. Some very long, some, but we're not starting over all the time. I think a lot of that has to do with our culture and climate at Franklin High School, where we support each other, we celebrate our successes. Yes, we hold our teachers accountable and our administrators and our bookkeepers and our custodians. But we also realize that, um, people need support and they need to be uplifted, just like the students. So, that's, the reason for the numbers is not because of, i- it's not by happenstance. We have a strong English department and we have great students and we had parents that were supporting their students. Math has always, well, I don't want to say has always, has recently been a struggle. But last year's data, even dealing with COVID, we reduced the failure rate by more than ten percent. So, we went from the previous year's pass rate being sixty-two point five percent to sixty-nine point three percent, which is a reduction in failure rate by more than ten percent. So, that's how we got the level one for math. And then same thing, our African-American students, de- we decreased the failure rate by, from fifty-eight percent to sixty-six percent. So, we went up eight percentage points. Now, this is, this is our data during COVID compared to before COVID. So, we went up seven points overall math, eight points with black students. We went up three points of economically disadvantaged, Hispanic too small to calculate, multiple races too small to calculate. Students with disabilities, which are our special education students, went from a forty percent pass rate to a sixty-four percent pass rate. I challenge you to find another school, high school, middle school, or elementary school that increased that much with special education students in math. Now, I might say it's not one out there, but I bet you we're up there in the top five percent in that one category. Not saying in everything, but in that category. So, hats off to our students with disabilities in math last year. Our white students actually decreased last year in math from seventy-nine percent, they went down to seventy-two percent. So, that's an area that, um, we want to keep an eye on too. So, math, we were in the yellow with gap groups. And the two gap groups that are getting us for math from last year are our students with disabilities, because even though we're sixty-four percent, you've got to be at seventy. So, that was a level two. And then economically disadvantaged, we're still not at seventy, we're at sixty-four. If you get two level-two gap groups, then overall, you're considered level two. So, in gap groups, we're level two. Chronic absenteeism, yes, that's a challenge, but let me educate you on what chronic absenteeism is. It means you've missed more than ten percent of the school year for any reason. You can be in the hospital for three weeks, um, and almost be at the level of chronically absent. We, um, now, this year, we're running a different schedule, but in the past, there were a hundred and eighty days in the school year. So, ten percent of one eighty is eighteen. Any student that missed eighteen or more days was considered chronically absent. It's for anything. If you're, if you have to go to court and the judge says you've got to be there and you're absent because you're in court, you're still considered absent as far as the way the state calculates this. They can bring a note for court, we can mark it exempt in Power School, but still, you're absent. If you're home with the flu for five days, that's counting up towards that eighteen. It's a reason you're absent, but you're still absent. Um, field trips don't count against you. Surprisingly, suspension doesn't count against this number, I don't make up the rules. Um, but being out sick, being in court, going on vacation, even taking a college visit counts into the chronically abs- um, absent. So, anyone who missed more than eighteen days last year is more, is higher than ten percent and you fall into that category. Prior to COVID, our chronic absenteeism rate was seventeen percent. Um, and then last year, it was forty-four percent. That sounds, it sounds like forty-four percent of our students aren't coming to school at all. That's not the case. They just missed more than ten percent of the year. No, we don't want to miss any percent, but it doesn't mean that they just, now, we have some that truly miss maybe half the year. But that's a very small number. I don't know J.P. King and S.P. Morton's number like, numbers like Franklin High, but we don't have that many that just miss like that. Because for one thing, if you miss fifteen days in a row, we have to drop you because we can't c- claim money for those students. What I'm trying to say is chronically absent, yes, it sounds horrible, nobody wants red. But it doesn't mean that forty-four percent of our students never come to school. They just don't come to school enough to be considered in the, in the green, if that makes sense. I think that need to be, um, clarified a little bit too. All right. So, let's talk about science. Science, we had some turnover in the science department. We had, um, you can make accreditation two different ways on the, on the, the most recent previous year or the three-year average. And we have been so historically strong in science that even though we had a bad year last year, fifty-eight percent pass rate, we have been so strong the two years prior that if you average it all together, it's, um, we're still seventy-three percent. So, we got some work to do in science, but we're still in the green in science, even though it's three-year average. Okay, graduation rate, before COVID, we were ninety-seven percent. There's so many different ways you can look at graduation rate. Uh, and it's, actually, it's the graduation completion index. You get so many points for every type of diploma that we award. It's, you know, seventy-five points for a GED, zero points for a dropout, twenty-five points for, so it's not just a percentage of how many students walk across the stage in June. It's not quite that simple. But before COVID, we were ninety-seven percent. Last year, graduation rate, I don't want to get it wrong at all, even though I think I know in my head exactly what it is. Okay, we were eighty-seven percent. So, we, we dropped some with graduation rate. You've got to remember, we're a small high school. So, if you've got seventy-nine graduates, one or two of them- so if you got seventy-nine graduates, one or two of them is more than a percentage point, you know, that they, it, it counts a lot heavier than a high school that might have three hundred graduates, the way they do the um, the calculations. But we wanna continue doing better with that, and with dropout rate, we went from the green to the yellow, because we had too many students that didn't graduate within four years, and when I say too many students, I'm talking about twelve. Um, so doesn't mean they're not gonna graduate, but they didn't graduate within four years. Um, so we're not satisfied with that either. However, before last year, we were one percent, we, one student out of the class of two thousand nineteen, because the two COVID years, the state just threw all that out, one student of the class of two thousand eighteen didn't graduate, the rest of them did. And um, I would, um, cha- I know what the, I know what was said, but I would challenge that we're just giving out certificates and not diplomas, because um, I feel like our teachers and staff worked too hard, um, to have that out there. I have to um, address that a little bit, not trying to say that the point wasn't made, and yes, sometimes we socially promote students, and yes, sometimes we try to give multiple chances to prevent dropouts and to prevent students from being discouraged, and it's a fine line there, you don't want to um, go too far in either direction, you don't want the diploma not to mean anything, but you also don't want the, the, you also don't want a fifty percent graduation rate trying to prove a point, and then you have fifty percent dropout. So it's, it's a, education is hard, it's hard work, it's fun work, but it's hard work, and sometimes it's easy to pick out things just to um, to jump on and to criticize, and we are, we're all about accountability and we want to be held accountable, but um, we're all a team, w- we're small enough in the city of Franklin that we can all be a team. It's not just the, the teachers and, and staff at Franklin High School, it's everybody in Franklin City Public Schools, it's everybody on the school board, it's everybody on city council, any of you are just live on Robin Hood Road and don't have any kids in the school system, still, your property value is determined by the quality of school system that we have. So everybody's affected by this, and um, we all need to stick together and work, work together and meet our challenges. Okay, I'm, I tell you what I'm gonna do for the sake of everyone, I can read every one of these goals to you, I'll be glad to do it, but basically, what we're trying to do is get better than we were last year based on the data. I've got exactly the percentage of points we gotta have to meet, to meet each one of our goals, we got it broken down by every way, it, it, it sounds good, it looks pretty, but here's what we really need, we need our students in school every day, we need them their own time, we don't need you, um, and I'm talking to parents, and I'm a parent, we don't need the students picked up early, we don't need um, our teachers being fussed out because they're trying to hold the kids accountable, but then on the flip side, you know, when they are holding them accountable, we don't need um, criticism, well, we do need criticism, but we just need educated criticism. Just make sure you, that you know what's behind all this, because we, we need to all be on the same team together. We got seven SMART goals, um, one for every indicator, we have our comprehensive school improvement overarching goal that addresses math, cause that's been our historical challenge. We got it all looking pretty on paper, it's just a matter of what we're gonna do in reality during those one hundred and eighty days that we get to serve the um, the students in Franklin, and, and what we do as a government and as a community and as a city, all this doesn't mean anything if we're, if we're just pulling apart from each other. So um, I challenge you to hold us accountable, it doesn't mean that everything is gonna be pretty all the time, it doesn't mean that we don't have areas that we need to be, to t- um, talk about. I'm thinking about Ms. Lee standing behind me, Ms. Lee doesn't mind calling me and giving me her honest, true feedback, and we agree most of the time, and sometimes we don't, but um, I think we come away all the time moving forward and on the same team together most of the time, and we're gonna talk about your flags in the field tomorrow. Okay? Um, and, and others, I mean, I appreciate us being able to have the honest conversations. Uh, we got lots of room for improvement at Franklin High School, but we have a lot of celebrations too. And um, I'm proud of our kids, I'm proud of our teachers, I'm proud of our parents, um, I'm proud of most of our day, most of our day goes great, and that, that the part that doesn't go great, we're working to improve it every day, and we just need everybody pulling together. Okay, my sermon's over, we'll pass around the collection plate. And call it a wrap.
Thank you, Mr. Sp- Mr. Phelps, Mr. Spain and Dr. Stafford, wonderful reports. One thing is clear, tonight and two weeks ago, that these parents are here to help us, and we're all gonna work together, aren't we? Okay. Is there a superintendent's report?
There is, there is. Uh, Ms. Moore, come up as well. So Ms. Moore will help me fill in the gaps, uh, if anything I have missed and, and want to highlight. So what you have here is, um, we're gonna talk about the subject of parent engagement. So what's happening at S.P. Morton, um, this was September, you had your Virginia Living Science Museum, and as you can see, you see the Monday, September twenty-sixth, you see all the things that were occurring at the elementary school, you see all the things that were occurring at the middle school, I'm not gonna sit here and read it to you, uh, you can see what was going on in September. But in October, we have uh, coming up, and Ms. Moore, would you uh, talk about that a little bit more? It's, it's, it's our Get Lit for Literacy Night, uh, it's terrific for families, and we're gonna, it's all around our Fall Festival, so go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Um, so I help manage and support our parent engagement efforts at all three schools. Um, and S.P. Morton and J.P. King are Title One, are listed as Title One schools, so we have Title One funding that provides the support financially to do these projects. Um, you heard Mrs. Spain as well as Dr. Stafford earlier talk about literacy and how it's important for our students to read. The first September, um, engagement strategy was focused around, um, science, so that's why the Virginia Living Building Museum came out to each schools on two separate days, bought animals. What I'm proud to say is that our parent engagement specialist, Mr. Riddick, works with our curriculum specialist and our teachers in the schools to determine what's being covered that month. So our parent engagement efforts to educate the parents on how to help their students are based on what the kids are learning that month. So they leave with strategies, they leave with takeaways, things that they can do at home with their kids, also helping answering, answering questions on certain strategies, because I have five children, and math is totally different now than it was when I was in school. So, um, to have that extra support for parents, um, that's the focus. This, for the month of October, it's literacy focused for S.P. Morton. We thought that it was very important not to just give away books, because if you can't read, you're just looking at the pictures. So we have what's called Get Lit for Literacy. Lit, lit stands for literacy is terrific. Each family that will come out that day is a Title One annual meeting, so they will learn about what Title One means to S.P. Morton. Mr. Spain will go over the goals of the school for the year to give parents information on, these are the goals, these are our gaps, similar presentation to what you had tonight, but not as, as more, as in depth, I would say, but more on a parent level. Um, then they will have an activity, their activity, they have a Get Lit Pack, they will get a bag that they bring back for every literacy, um, event, which is every other month. They have, this year, this month, we're doing flashcards. So the goal is for parents to create their own flashcards for their children for sight words at home. They'll get index cards, there were four hundred index cards, the index card holders, markers, stickers, we'll also be providing them with adult sight words all the way up to twelfth grade. So you're talking about a thousand, fifteen hundred words that they can focus on their students. The third, students are pre-K, they can start with the pre-K, pre-primar words, if they're in fifth grade, they can start at the fourth grade words and work up to twelfth grade, if their child is advanced, they'll have some advanced words as well. Um, so that's there. Once they finish the activity in the school, they will be opened up to our Fall Festival. We're turning S.P. Morton into a pumpkin patch, so when you drive by the school, you'll see bales of hay, you'll see cornstalk, you'll see pumpkins. Um, we will also have a literacy room in front of the library, so the library will have couches made of hay, um, love seats and chairs made of hay, and books will be given out. Hey, um, the police department has graciously given us their spotlight, so it will be well lit that night, we'll have inflatables, candy apples, they'll do trunk or treat with our vendors, if you have not signed up, here's my plug, please do. We're looking for more. You don't have to be a, uh, you don't have to be a, a business to sign up, you can be a parent with a trunk that just wants to come out and support S.P. Morton's stu- school students. Um, then we also, we're working on our petting zoo to bring the pettings to our schools, um, however, Suffolk and Cortland could not help, so now we're going to hopefully, um, get with grazing acres and bring the horses out for ASPCA and bring the doggies out. Um, but trying to bring, give the experience to our students who are not able to get out, to experience those for themselves. So that's with S.P. Morton. J.P. King, this is, the presentations tonight are available on our board docs on our website, so you're always able to go back and look. Um, this is the vendor registration for the trunk or treat. Um, ooh, I, sorry, J.P. King, we had to change J.P. King's literacy night, because the weather's getting colder, so they will have a STEM night, and we're proud to say that we have partnered with the Forgotten Hero Foundation to provide them with an aviation night, where they will actually be, families will be taken from J.P. King to the Hampton Roads Executive Airport in Suffolk, and they will experience all things aviation, including the flight simulator. They will give the lessons around the solar system and how that affects flight, um, and we're excited about that. And then next month, they will have their Get Lit for Literacy, they will get the same literacy pa- sight words, but on their, their level as well. So that's how we're attacking literacy for the month of October and November. You want me to keep on?
I have Ms. Moore, uh, because Ms. Moore was very instrumental in planning all of this, so I'll be able to give you details that I could not give you, so that's why I had Ms. Moore come up and thank you, Ms. Moore. And so what you have here is the parent engagement survey, and the survey was distributed on Thursday, uh, October thirteenth, and there were four, uh, fourteen responses, and you can see the questions that were asked. I'm not gonna read all the questions to you, but I just wanna just let you know that a survey had, uh, gone out and we had fourteen responses. Uh, Ms. Moore, is this uh, survey still open or is it, or is it closed? Cause we did, to give someone else, uh, opportunity.
Right, so this is dedicated just to Franklin High School, I spoke previously, I'm sorry, about S.P. Morton being Title One funded. Franklin High School is not Title One, so everything that we do at Franklin High School hits our operation, and when our budgets are cut, it affects how we plan, you know, our vision, our vision of life. However, to start our family engagement, this name includes its own family engagement with, um, Franklin High School, we decided to do a survey of our parents. When are you available, how much do you wanna be involved, what's the best time, what's the best day, what type of information you would like to receive, though, if you're interested in volunteering, and we have seen over the, this has been out for a week, we're gonna have now, we only have fourteen parents who've signed up. We have some parents who said they don't even wanna be involved at all. So when we talk about parent engagement, in order for us to plan out, um, and provide activities at the high school to support what Mr. Phelps and his team is doing, we need feedback from the parenting community. Um, it's hard to schedule events around fourteen people. When I, when Mr. Phelps, how many students do you have?
Three hundred eighty-three.
So we appreciate the city being more involved and community members being more involved and getting our parents involved all the way possible, because they're social, and we still need their involvement. In order for the board to meet their goals that they set out, all of the goals from the schools are met by the goals that are determined by the school board. Their SMART goals are, the central office goals are aligned to the school board goals, the school goals are aligned to the school board goals, but in order to meet the goals for your parents. So I, I support all of you, and I'm available if you need some ideas on how to help with us, um, the office is always open as well.
So Ms. Moore, we'll, we'll, uh, take an opportunity to reopen the survey.
It's open, we're gonna read you modules through Parent Square, um, you'll get to that information in a few minutes on how many parents would you have registered, just aren't responding.
Um, I was. Responded to the engagement survey, where can they go to find it?
It should be located, okay, so Parent Square is an app on your phone, for those who don't know, and I can pull it up and show it to you. Like I have it on, you have already paid parent. So I get all of the posts, so I can see what's going out as well, so when I have parents who say I didn't get anything, I can, I can, but anyway. So it's on your phone, it's like your, your Apple TV app or your music app, when an announcement goes off, it's there, it keeps a log for all of your messages, so you're able to go back, login. Also, your teachers can contact you directly through your Parent Square app, when there's issues of any homework, missing homework, or hey, what's going on with Johnny, he's been seeing him for the last two days, parents can instant message to their teachers right back. So it's a great app, I love.
Dance party.
So, um, but parents can, um, pull up old messages, they can pull up the videos that were sent out. We also let our parents know when schools will be closed or delayed through Parent Square. Um, so just another, uh, attendance, attendance messages are, and notes are also sent through. You can actually, if your student's out, you can actually send that parent that's returning to the school with that. Yes, sorry, that was an initiative step forth that the board approved, so we're grateful because as Mr. Spain will say, it is a game changer for us in communicating with parents. Going through it. Um, if you want printouts, what's up there? Okay, Ms. Moore, you just asked us to want printouts to get, take the door to the door, and I will be doing that for the Franklin High School, so you can stop after tomorrow.
And you can see here the numbers, uh, for, out of, uh, a thousand thirty-eight students listed in our division, nine hundred and ninety-three have linked with Parent Square accounts. Uh, nine, nine ninety-three out of one of, that's, so that's ninety-six percent, and our goal is one hundred percent, so we only have four percent to go. So we're doing a good job in, in as far as, uh, people registering for, uh, Parent Square, and as Ms. Moore has stated, we just need, uh, more feedback, so we know what to do and what you want to do. Since this is superintendent's time, I wanna also say, I, I thank the board, uh, for instilling confidence in me, uh, for, for being the interim. And for parents, what I wanna say to you is, I've been in many school systems, um, in my twenty-five year career, the public sector and private sector. I can tell you that Franklin City Public Schools can be the highest performing school system in the state of Virginia. All we have to do, we have everything we need, and all we have to do is continue to pull together in one direction. So the school systems that struggle, they're, they're divisive, and they pull apart. The school systems that always succeed, they come together, and they've all won the same shoes. And so while I'm here, my doors are always open, please reach out to me, I'm accessible, I'm highly visible, and I'll be here for you, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, for those remarks. Due to the lateness of the hour, we have our next meeting November third, so I think we can work out at that meeting our November and December schedule. I believe on December third, we have a joint meeting with city council, I think that's correct, Mr. Johnson, thank you. Any important dates to remember or comments by the school board members?
I'd just like to make a quick comment, that I really appreciate what Dr. Carter just said, and I wanna echo that I have that same belief, and so I'm really appreciative to members of the community that are coming to support the school, and there is no reason for our small division not being the very best in the whole state. I have total confidence in our students, I have confidence in. I have total confidence in our students, I have confidence in the teachers, I have confidence in our principals, I have confidence in our administration, and I just am really excited as we move forward. So let's just make that personal commitment to work together and to be supportive and to listen to one another, and to be willing to hear things that we may not like to hear, be willing to talk about things we may not like to talk about, but to just put it on the table and address it together as a community and be united. I mean, we can really, really be amazing, and I, I just, that's, that's my heart. So I just want to let you know that, and I'm really appreciative for community support.
I think tonight you've also seen a level of transparency that you've probably never seen before, and we promise that into the future as well.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the other thing, again, I, I actually, the sentiments. I've been on the board two years, and I've yet to hear from a parent or anyone in the community until very recently. And I would encourage parents in the community to, to reach out to the board, the school board member that represents your ward, in addition to coming to the meetings, but, you know, we have our emails, my email and phone number are posted on the school website, and I would very much welcome to talk to anyone at all, but particularly Ward Six, who I represent. And because feedback is very, very important. It would, it, in my, it would help me do my job better in being part of this school board, because my attitude is, is I'm here to serve my community of Franklin and particularly our children, so.
Any other comments? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We're adjourned. Dr. Scott?